All righty, welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and call to order today's Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is October 1st, 2024. The time is now 3:00 PM. First off, we've got the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion on floor by Mr. Adams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next, we've got the invocation and pledge. I've asked Mr. Martin to provide the invocation, followed by Mr. Adams with the pledge.
Let's pray. My Father and our God, Lord, we just thank you for loving us. And Father, we come before you as your humble servants. Father, we thank you for our community. Lord, we thank you for just being able to be here today. Father, we pray your special blessing on these proceedings. Lord, we pray your blessings and just protection on our county employees, our law enforcement, our fire and EMS workers, and all county employees. Lord, thank you for this great nation, and we just ask you to continue to be with us. In your son's name we ask and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Direct your attention to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have citizen comment. Anyone wishing to address the board can come up. Please state your name and your district, and we'll provide you three minutes to say your piece. Thank you. Mr. Bryan. Yes, sir. How you doing?
My name is Mike Bryan, and I'm District Three, and Chris Adams is my supervisor. So, the reason I'm here, the other day I got some taxes on my car. I thought that lady told me the other week this car's value's supposed to go down. Mine went up $4,000 on one, and my other one went up $1,000. So, I said, I didn't know. I went and talked to Jane Irving, and she explained to me what's going on and everything. I told her, I said, "Well, look like Amherst could come down a little bit on the taxes." On the car. I know you're not going to answer me if I'm going to talk personal property taxes. Looked like you could come down a little bit. Reason, when I get this, like, I got caught in my son-in-law's taxes from Bedford. He got the same kind of car I got. Last mile of John, a little bit more expensive. His tax ain't but $529. Mine, same car, is $800. Not this one. Oh. It's $857. That's a big difference, ain't it? I mean, don't y'all think? There, in the United States, there's 18 states that don't have no car tax at all. District Columbia don't have. And the reason, I was thinking, I looked up Nelson. Nelson's number, $2.79, $100. Bedford is $2.35, $100. Applematics is $3. Now, Applematics lowered theirs. So, don't tell me y'all can't lower it if you want to. I know y'all all say, "Well, he's over here fussing about it." But I get people fuss all the time. They see it on YouTube right now when it comes up. They say they watch this program. I said, "Okay, good." But I don't understand why we can't lower it a little bit, lower it down. Applematics did. They lowered theirs down from what up ahead to $3, at least $3. And y'all, Amherst's $3.45. You're high on it, but. And another thing, we've got to have money coming. I know you've got to have money, but we've got the Waffle House, we've got the Cook-aid, we've got the Starbucks, we've got the Dunkin' Donuts. Are they going to pay taxes? They should raise up some revenue for Amherst County. And all the buildings is going on. I go, I see houses where Philip Walkham has put up, he's building. And I see different places, and the new apartments going up there. I know y'all go pulling tax money out for them. You ain't letting them new apartments set up there no tax, am I right? That'll come in. So, and then I saw where, I went and read up on it and said, "Y'all, the money on the food and everything else has increased in the last year." I know you raised the percentage of tax on that. And it says, "Real estate growth is up to 1.5% at the minimum." So, you're getting extra money. Are y'all handling the, I'm, don't get mad, but are y'all handling the money the best you can? That's what I'd like to know. I mean, if y'all, do you need some help from Bedford County? Because, I mean, they're getting $2.35, $100. That's a whole lot cheaper than what Amherst is. And I think Amherst ought to try to do something. Now, hey, you asked me to now pay my tax? I can pay my taxes. I'm not worried about it. But I think you're a little bit too high, and I think you need to come down a little bit. If all the other counties around here are cheaper, how come Amherst County can't do it? You've got enough people in here you need, like, maybe, I can pay mine, but maybe there's a lot of older people on social security and everything else. It hits them hard around this time of the year, Christmas time and everything else. And so, I believe, I believe y'all could do, but if you want to. I was, we were, I was thinking Jeremy was the one that figured it out. Jeremy's not the one. I found out that the board is the one that does the price on the taxes and stuff. So, I think y'all come down some for Amherst County people. I think, the people come and complain about it, but nobody come over here and, because they're scared to talk to y'all. But I, I mean, you're human, just like we are. And I just said, "Hey, I'll go out there and talk." I mean, I ain't scared to tell you, I think y'all would come down these taxes. Because I think if you did, you'd be a whole lot better off for the people and everything else. And Amherst County, and Madison Heights is growing. I mean, you've got to be getting in some more money from all the business and stuff that's going on. I know Bedford, you say, "Hey, Bedford's a big place." Well, when you've got a bigger place, you've got more money to put in the schools.
Mr. Bryan. That's your time. That's your time. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
A move.
Motion on floor by Mr. Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next item we have is a special presentation. I'd like to invite Mr. Bennett, if you'd like to come up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Jerry Bryan. My name is Jeremy Bennett. I am the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO. First, let me just say it's a pleasure to be back here in Amherst County. I was very fortunate to have a Tucker beef burger at Bonfire for lunch. Anytime I'm in town, that's usually my go-to place and my go-to dish. So, that aside, it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Awards. And for the benefit of your constituents who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934 to support and serve your interests as county officials. We support counties in many ways, first is through our advocacy at the state legislature and at the federal level. We also serve counties through educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. In 2003, we established our achievement award program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches for providing public services and identifying programs that can serve as models for counties to emulate. Today, I'm very proud to present Amherst County with its second-ever achievement award for the Amherst County Burn Building. This is VACO's 22nd annual achievement awards program, and this year we received a record 145 entries, of which only 45 winners were selected from 32 counties. So, it's a truly competitive program as only 33% of entries were selected as winners. This is Amherst County's second-ever achievement award, following your success last year for the Route 29 Business Statification Committee. And hopefully, this is the beginning of a beautiful trend and a both well for future successes. There are several criteria our judges follow as guidelines, first being, does the program provide an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or delivery of services? Does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation? And also, could it be served as a model for other local governments, among other criteria? I know that Public Safety Director Beam will probably be coming up here to brag a little bit about your program, but I will let you know that we publish all our achievement award winners, including Amherst, on our website for the rest of the Commonwealth to see. And we'd just like to congratulate Amherst County again for its excellent program and look forward to your participation in the achievement award program in 2025. I have the award here. I'll let our public safety friends speak, and then I think we're going to do a photo with them and y'all, if that's all right, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good.
And again, it's my pleasure to be here. Congratulations on your achievements.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, board. Mr. Chairman, what a great day for Amherst County. Last weekend, I had the privilege, it was raining, and I was kind of had some downtime, and I was flipping through my phone. And I was looking at old pictures, and I happened to look back at last July, when this thing really started to become a reality, when the dirt was being cleared by our Public Works Department. This program has truly, I don't, there's not a better way to describe community than this burn building project. The amount of money that was saved by this county, by hard work of our volunteers, our career staff, members of the community who were no, not even involved in firing EMS, but wanted to contribute to this project. So, to date, we probably ran, Chief, help me here, probably 60, 70 people through the building already, doing three more burns this month, and getting a lot of activity, a lot of action out there. And so, again, true representative of what community, being innovative, the county coming to the table, working with our volunteer partners and our community partners. So, I'm super excited. I won't say too much more, but would love to have a picture with you all and celebrate this award.
Congratulations. Thank you.
So, how about we, Brad, bring your staff up. Let's take a picture with the board and presentation for the VACO Award.
Wherever you want.
I think you and Chris have a.
Todd might be better up here.
Still not taller. Yes. Say sausage.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Pleasure. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for eating the burger.
Oh, it was delicious.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Martin.
So, that burn building is just a phenomenal facility, and it's continuing to be improved. Had the pleasure to teach many classes, train some new recruits out there, yet there was a lot of sweat equity that went into that facility by those gentlemen in the back there. But most importantly, I think that project really came to fruition because of the leadership of Chief Bean, all right? He's a true leader. He knows how to really relate to people and talk to people, and without his leadership, I do not think that that facility would have been completed. So, Chief Bean, thank you for that. Thank you all for the work that you do every day, but especially for that facility.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Thank you all. All right, next item we have is the project status report from the county administrator.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, the project status report is found in your board packet. I'll call your attention to, we do have the ribbon cutting ceremony for the improved Seminole Park. That's October the 15th at 5:00 PM. So, that's just before our regularly scheduled board meeting on October the 15th. Other than that, I won't go into any detail unless you have any specific questions on this.
Board, any questions? All right, seeing none. Next item we have is the county attorney's report. Mr. Pavlovich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Included in your agenda package is some revisions to the board's 2024 Rules of Procedure, specifically under Section 1-5, participation in meetings through electronic communications. I have made these modifications based on changes made by the General Assembly to the Code of Virginia that will permit electronic meetings by localities when there is a declared state or local state of emergency, and then also allows participation by individual members under certain circumstances. So, that's what these changes are for.
Sir, board, any questions for Mr. Pavlovich? All right, here, none. I'll make, you need a motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I'll make a motion that we re-adopt the rules of procedures as presented with the suggestion of revisions regarding electronic meeting procedures. Any further discussion, board? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pavlovich. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have is the liaison and committee reports. Planning Commission, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. We conducted a planning commission meeting on September 9th, 2024. We had three public hearings before us. The first was a rezoning of 52 acres of the EDA. That passed, and that will be coming before us later this month. We also had a child daycare off Clearview Road in Madison Heights for up to 12 children. That as well also passed. And then lastly, we had Resolution 2024-11, which was the property up here near Clifford, in between Clifford and Amherst, where the trucking equipment is parked. That was actually tabled for right now because of the ongoing work on 151. That has caused some delays. I don't think he was allowed to do the work because of the construction, so that was tabled. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir. Ad Committee, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ad Committee remains hard at work getting ready for the fair. Everything is coming together very nicely. Obviously, we still need volunteers, so if anyone's interested, let them know or let me know, and I can put you in touch with the right person. But the fair promises to be really very robust. We're going to have a livestock show this year for the first time ever. So, if you've got any kids that want to show animals, this is a good time to get them involved as close by. We're going to have a hot dog eating contest. So, if you've got a good appetite, come on, I'll put you to work. So, that's for the fair. And then on Monday, Mr. Barnes, who is the gentleman who came before us with Tyler Creasy, I don't have that last name right, do I? Scott? Wag. Right, right. He did an open house for his chicken house on Naked Creek Road. And if you didn't get a chance to see it, you missed something. It is phenomenal. He's going to have, Tyler, help me out here to make sure I get the number right. 44,000 chickens?
Yes, he's currently working on his inventory management plan, which will determine the total number, but that is what he's trying to achieve.
And these are laying hens, which means that they're not for food yet. They're strictly for laying eggs, and they will be marketed as natural, grass-fed, pasture-raised eggs. The eggs will go to a facility in Pennsylvania, and then will be sold throughout the East Coast. So, it's really cool, and it's pretty automated. The chickens will be inside, and then they're let outside into a 100-acre fenced-in area, and they'll graze during the day, and then they come back in in the evening and do their chicken thing. But to see how all this works is truly amazing. Lots of fans, lots of automation, lots of technology, lots of engineering, Mr. Chairman. And it's just, it's really nice. I'm very, very proud that Amherst, that he chose to make Amherst County his home, and we will be the first in our area to have such a thing. That's all for the Ad Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item we have, we're back to citizen comment. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time? Feel free to come up, state your name, district. You'll be provided three minutes as well, so. All right. Seeing none, we'll close citizen comment. Matters for members of the board? Mr. Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I think just kind of to fall on the heels of Mr. Bryan's comments about the personal property tax, I'm not sure if anybody else is receiving phone calls yet, but it seems to be, it's going to be an item that's going to be, have some discussion to it amongst our citizens, especially after the changes that we made following the last two previous budget years. I guess my question would be for Mr. Bryan, could, is there any way we can work together as a county to work with Ms. Irving to maybe put a press release or something out to address why the changes this year occurred compared to why they're seeing the differences from the two previous years?
Yes, sir, we could.
If you could, I think that might help mitigate some of this, even though it may still not, it's not, at the end of the day, yeah, taxes are not always not a favorable discussion, but at least they may understand a little bit better as far as why this came to be, because it's definitely catching quite a bit of attention on social media as well. So, I don't think it'd be a bad idea if we can potentially address that in some sort of press release on our website and via social media. Other than that, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Martin.
Sure. Mr. Bryan, could we find out the new projected opening of the improvements at 29 and 151, please?
Sorry, say that one more time.
They were supposed to open on September 23rd. I assume they were delayed due to the weather.
Oh, the projected, yes, yes.
An opening date.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Martin?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Pugh.
I have nothing, Chairman.
Ms. Tucker.
I just want to echo what Mr. Adams said. I know on social media, I've seen a lot of people who are unhappy with the taxes and tax rate. I don't think anybody likes to pay taxes. I don't, you know, we don't like to pay taxes. And I can understand, I can certainly understand the comments and the feelings there. However, I will take, I'll be, I will take pause and say that when people think that we don't take the spending of the tax money seriously here, we take it very seriously. We angst over every single line item. We truly do. And we try to spend the taxpayers' money as if it's our own. And I don't know of a board member here, every single one of them, who's not a fiscal conservative, and will stretch a dollar till it squeaks. So, we hear what you're saying, and, you know, there's always room for improvement, but it's had to get that one off my chest, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm going to beat a dead horse as well here. Probably shouldn't say that on YouTube, but regarding the taxes, just note that there was no technical increase in property tax. It was, what happened was there was some rebates associated with COVID that we didn't, they expired essentially. So, I'm sure whatever press release you put together, make sure you note that. But I will say this, we'll take your concerns, take everybody's concerns into advisement as we start off the budget process for the upcoming fiscal year. So, thank you. That's all I have. Next item we have is a closed session. So, I'll make a motion that we enter into closed session for the limited purpose of discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the public body regarding property in District Three pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a III of the Code of Virginia, and consultation with legal counsel retained by the board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice related to the disposition or acquisition of real property regarding the Winton property pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a III and VIII. With that, the motion on the floor to enter into closed session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming item one is addressing Route 60. Is that correct? The only thing I will do is I will note that I will be recusing myself from item number one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. With that, I'll ask again, a motion to go into closed session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We're in closed session. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, I'll move that the board of supervisors certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session. Uh, with that, uh, we'll take a vote. Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Uh, with that, motion to adjourn?
The move.
Motion by Mr. Adams, we are adjourned. Thank you.